Good afternoon. Welcome, everyone. I am calling this Committee of the Whole meeting on Wednesday, September 8th at 6:30 PM to order. And for doing this, I would like to go through what, how this is going to happen tonight, since we don't have a lot of Committee of the Holes lately. This is regarding the environmental justice resolution. We have had three resolutions that are in your packet. The first one is, was started in the Liberation and Freedom Committee, reviewed by legal, our legal department went through Public Health and Safety, and then to council, which was voted on to be referred back to call with public comment and for further discussion. Since then, two other versions were submitted. One version, which we are going to call version number two, was submitted by Alder Rasmussen, and that is in your packet. And then we had a version number three submitted by the mayor, and that is in your packet as well. We're going to try to talk about, as we talk about these versions, I've been asked to please say version one, two, or three when you're having questions or discussion to keep them correct in our minds of what we're talking about. This Committee of the Whole will discuss and come up, we have a couple of things that we can do. This is, nothing will be voted on to be made as a resolution tonight. This is, everything would either have to be referred to council, which whatever version may come up with tonight, it may be referred back to a committee for further review, it may be referred back for further education or further discussion. So, any of, any or all of the above can happen. Public comment, of course, is going to be taken. Just as a reminder, this body cannot respond to any comments. All discussion, please, and all questions be, can be referred to the chair. All remarks by this committee can be referred to the chair, and I ask that let's keep on topic. All questions and things should remain germane. No personal discussions or, or discussions of names. Bring it to me, and let's just do what we're here to do. And again, you know, if you are speaking to a version, just let me know, or let everyone know so we can keep it as straight as possible. So with that, we're going to start with public comment. And Bruce Grau would be the first one.
Hi, I'm Bruce Grau, 1115 North 10th Street. While you're editing the environmental justice resolution document, please consider two points. First, about equity. Equity doesn't provide a special advantage to one group over another. Special advantage is a paradigm we're currently experiencing, most sharply seen in the growing gap of wealth inequality. An equitable approach identifies what puts groups at a disadvantage and seeks to remedy it, leading to equality. By disavowing equity, you are upholding discrimination and inequality. No equity, no equality. Equity raises the bottom up, lifting everyone. For example, when pollution is controlled on the factory floor in the neighborhood, surrounding neighborhood, it will not travel downwind, downstream, downhill, or downhome, and that benefits everyone. When areas of environmental justice are identified, the state and federal government will assist in remediation, benefiting cash-strapped local governments and homeowners. When factory floor workers in immediate surrounding neighbors are healthy, the quality of life for all residents and the economic, the local economy benefit. In fact, studies suggest that these economic benefits for, from improved health far exceed minimal job loss resulting from regulation. Second point, why have we come to look so negatively about regulation? Regulations that promote a healthy and prosperous quality of life for everyone. If pollution didn't exist at the level of toxicity it does, we wouldn't need regulation. Yet somehow, the producers of the toxins are portrayed as the victims, taking the workers' livelihoods with them down this distorted and self-serving narrative. These fabricated victims have been caught burying the poisonous truths about their chemicals, yet they are the victims? Documents strongly suggest they've been more effective at cover-up than self-clean-up, impacting everyone. This manipulated situation has forced resource-limited local governments and homeowners to bear disproportionate costs due to these polluters' single-minded drive for profit. An environmental justice resolution directs us to hold the violators responsible. Furthermore, these resources from the federal and state government will be identified by robust environmental justice advocacy. By adopting an environmental justice resolution focusing on equity, this council becomes such an advocate. An equitable approach benefits all by raising from the bottom, and it directly counters the special advantages enriching the top, not enabling it. Thank you.
I failed to comment that, we usually keep it at three minutes, name and address. Thanks. David Ekman.
I'm David Ekman, President and CEO of the Greater Wausau Chamber of Commerce, 200 Washington Street, Wausau, Wisconsin. This evening, you have three environmental justice resolutions to consider as you move forward. From the chamber perspective, there's an appreciation for staff, members of council, and mayor to craft alternative language that was born in this community and not transplanted from some other community in another state. As you move forward, know that we desire safe and healthy neighborhoods for our citizenry and our business community. We all desire and advocate for transparency and participatory process in these and other matters. What is of growing concern is that resolutions such as this hold great potential to adversely impact business and industry, businesses of all sizes and industry sectors, as they consider expansions to grow their business, to compete, and to retain and sustain job growth for our citizens. The anti-business rhetoric by a member of this council is quite astounding. The same member of your council has clearly targeted two major employers located in District Three as part of the initial environmental justice resolution. I'd like to take the opportunity to refer to an op-ed article in the Wausau Pilot Review dated July 19th, 2021. In the op-ed, Alder calls out local corporations as bullies, and his concluding statement in the op-ed states, quote, "It is time to say goodbye to the local elitism, big money, and old money that all of us know and dislike so well," referring to companies that have financial resources. So let's reflect on this comment. Big money and old money. Have you any idea how much money in form of grants and gifts have gone to help this community grow and improve, to help children and families make it through difficult times, provide education from K-12 to post-secondary, to fund, help, and develop new academic programs? Money's that flow to not-for-profit entities. Did you know that a local foundation last year collected over $650,000 from big money and old money, distributed for COVID relief to local families? So, you want to say goodbye to larger corporations, small family-owned companies, LLCs, companies in all your districts collectively provide good family-supporting jobs to thousands in our community? It's increasingly alarming the lack of appreciation that elected officials have for their business community today. This evening, there is hope that you separate yourselves from those that seek to harm and push business away, and ultimately harm families. Remember, businesses are your constituents, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Teri Killian.
My name is Teri Killian. I'm a co-spokesperson for Citizens for a Clean Wausau, and I reside at 133 East Thomas Street in Wausau. Citizens for a Clean Wausau has for years spoken in support of those negatively impacted by a lack of environmental justice and equity in the city of Wausau. We have heard from certain staff members and certain Alder persons disputing the lack of disparity. The facts that have been presented to this body, however, are not disputable. They're facts. You know where the percentage of low-income and minority populations in Wausau are found. You know where severe contamination issues have impacted the health and welfare of these populations. Yet some members of this body continue to deny and procrastinate the need for environmental justice and for an environmental justice resolution. In order to address this resolution appropriately, you must address and include equity. The word equality means that everyone gets the same treatment, the same chances, the same resources, and we know that's not true. It would be really wonderful if it were true, right? But the word equity recognizes that each person has different circumstances, and equity allocates the exact resources and opportunities needed to reach an equal outcome. That's why we have programs like Badger Care. Those who can't afford insurance out of pocket, like many of us are able to do, get Badger Care. That equity program allocates the resources and opportunities needed to reach an equal outcome, having insurance. Now, in order to continue the denial of a comprehensive environmental justice resolution, staff members have written their own resolution to be reviewed by this body. This, in our opinion, is an avoidance technique, and we wish to state that CCW is in full support of the initial resolution that was presented and was based on the Evanston Resolution. While the mayor's draft would be an acceptable alternative resolution, it should be amended to include equity. Don't you want to help those who are unable to afford to always help themselves? I do. And this resolution will put forth a city policy that will provide equity for those with different circumstances than probably you or I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Gusselman.
Gary Gusselman, 319 Park Avenue, Wausau, Wisconsin. Thank you very much for this Committee of the Whole taking on this large issue of environmental justice. This city council has taken on the larger role of community for all, and now it's glad to see that this city council is also taking on this very vital issue of environmental justice. Speakers before me have already spoken to the issue of equity, and I think that's a key part in the original resolution. It's, and I think that there's a whole, you can spend more than, the speakers prior to me already said good words about the role of equity, and, but I think more can be said, and I, maybe that will happen at the city council meeting when, when the final resolution is, is presented. But I think the city council really has to really seriously look at the history of the word equity. It may not be appearing in, in the words of that word, but that word, but the concept of equity, of lifting up folks, goes back throughout our nation's history, and I think that's, it's an important word, and I think that's an important word for the history of Wisconsin, and I think that we should seriously think about adding that to the resolution. Environmental justice is a big topic that's going to be with us. It's already in a lot of federal regulations, and I think that I'm supporting the general concept, or the larger issue of environmental justice, especially versions one and three. I think that they're, but I think the word equity should be a part of it. It's, it's, in this day and age, it has become a toxic word, but I think, in my view, it's a very good word that describes this nation as a whole. So, in 50 years from now, the history is going to be looking at this city council and saying, hey, they took, they took an action on community for all. They really stepped forward in realizing the, an issue that faced this community, and they took that stance. How will they be looking at this in 50 years with regards to the contamination, the issue of, of contamination in the city? Are they going to be seeing that this city council acted very prudently with regard to a resolution for environmental justice that will guide this city for, for the next few year, for the next many years? But I think history will be looking at this, at this city council to see indeed how we proceed. Congratulations on community for all, but I think the next step will be the debate and the, the vote with regard to environmental justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Tomczek.
Hi, I'm Mike Tomczek, representing Colby and Colby Millwork, 1323 South 11th Avenue, right here in Wausau. And I guess it's, seems strange to me why you would want to have a separate resolution on environmental justice. The city is engaged in a strategic planning process, and that process will hopefully give some guiding principles about how the city will govern and run the city operations. And environmental justice could be incorporated into that, just like you should have guiding principles, not only in environmental justice, but what about public safety? What about the guiding principles of Public Works? The, the financial strategies that we're going to want to enumerate, again, how much leverage we want to have? How about economic development strategies? So again, I just question why you'd want to put something like this out when you could have a comprehensive plan that would guide everything? It just makes more sense, and, and I don't know if you guys have done anything with that with your facilitator or not. But I guess if the council does decide they want to pursue, you know, economic justice through a resolution, and then address all sorts of other guiding-type principles with different resolutions, and not have everything all together, I believe that the version two that was presented by Alder Person Rasmussen should be strongly considered. I think it's an improvement over the previous versions, as it more clearly defines the role of the EPA and the DNR, and how they do to promote environmental justice, and certainly it gives examples of the tools that the city can use in putting environmental justice, not as a concept, but into practice. Now, I didn't see, I don't know if the page wasn't in the, in the agenda packet, but there was a lot of the preambles, didn't see the, where it's going to be resolved, the resolving actions, but certainly stress our company's position that, you know, additional regulation by the city on top of the patchwork of federal and state regulations, it's problematic for not only just these big corporations, but all local businesses. Not just those big businesses out in the industrial park, it's also a concern for the people on Main Street, and even for those who run businesses out of their house. They'll tell you that there's enough regulations. And again, when there are already are regulations put out by the federal and the state, we think that those should be followed and enforced. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is William Harris.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is William Harris. I live at 316 and a half, North Third Street, Department C, Wausau, Wisconsin, zip code 54403. I'm also the Marathon County Board Supervisor for District Three. I thank you, Chairman, and thank council members tonight for allowing me to speak. I also want to thank you for passing the Community for All Resolution. In terms of the environmental justice resolution, I support the version modeled after the Evanston, and I also support the version brought by the mayor. I think in these discussions, in terms of talking about business versus environmental justice, I think we frame it wrong, because I don't think that there has to be competing, you know, that one has to compete with the other. I think if business were to back resolutions that actually support cleanup and support making sure that everyone has a safe place to drink, and, and that the environment is, you know, good for everyone, I think they would get community support. And I think in working with the community, they'd have more support for business in terms of building in those areas. So I think it could actually be an opportunity for business. Me, I'm not a person who's against business. My parents were small business owners, and again, there's, there's opportunity there. But I, I do find a problem always when it is, when it comes a, a concern where it's always, you know, people that are disadvantaged or vulnerable populations, those are always the people that have to wait, or we'll just couch their issues into something else, it's not that important. These are the people that have, they're usually not seen, and it's the reason why we bring up these resolutions and make bold statements and try to move forward, because otherwise, they don't get the help that they need. So I would just ask that businesses take a look at that and think about how they could help the situation. There are so many ways in which business, as mentioned, have been benefits to community, why not be a benefit to the community, and look out for people who need it the most? And I ask this committee, whatever resolution you pass, I hope that you do pass a resolution, and that you look out for all of our citizens. Certainly, I would be in favor of the word equity. I myself know the struggles of getting that into a resolution, but it is very important, and it's very important that we look out for all citizens. I think there, the saying says, you know, a rising tide lifts all boats. We do better when we all do better. Thank you.
I think that takes it care of the public comment. Thank you, everyone. So, I guess now we discuss this, these three versions, and if anybody has questions or comments, go ahead. Go ahead, Alder.
Thank you. So I guess I'll start us off, because I, after the discussion that we had in Public Health and Safety and the refer back to this body, it occurred to me that, given the fact that there was a fair amount of push and pull between both the, the public and, you know, some of our commerce centers and business advocates, that perhaps it would be a good idea if we, as a council, were offered more than one choice. And I'm glad to see that we have three of them tonight, because there's a lot for us to mull over. But version number two started because I got to thinking about, you know, I, I had asked our professional staff to do the research that they should have been asked to do six months ago. And most public policy starts with research to figure out how, how we want to get to a, a product from start to finish, and that really was not done with version number one. Version number one came in substantially complete, and then was tweaked from there. So I asked that we back into this a little bit, and I asked our professional staff in both Public Works and Legal, that if the city were to want to draft an environmental justice statement, what should it say? And within those conversations and their research, it, it really was revealed that it really should incorporate by reference the provisions of Title VI, the work of the agencies, and the skillsets of the agencies that are tasked with carrying out the tenets of environmental justice, both the EPA and the Wisconsin DNR, and recognize that we support and respect their authority, and that we support the work that they do, and that we recognize that all of our citizens deserve clean living environments, safe air, safe soil, and safe water. And so, following that research, and typically when we write a resolution, the first half really is the educational principles that educate us and the public on what, what's out there and why we're doing it. And at the end, we sum that up and voice our support. Version two does not only include the programs that are currently available and that are currently managed by those two agencies, but it does make a positive statement toward safe living environments, safe neighborhoods for all of our citizens. It does incorporate the word equity on page two, that was part of the operating message of the DNR, that indicates that the DNR promotes diversity, fairness, and equity, and the principles of environmental justice, and is bound by Title VI of the Civil Rights Act and its implementing regulations. So, you know, we have incorporated that concept of equity, as they should be, in their mode of operation. So, I think that my concern, all along with version number one, is that it calls for a series of subsequent actions by this body that could have lasting negative impacts on commerce and growth in this area. Version number two, on the other hand, is a well-reasoned approach to the concepts of environmental justice, gives a positive nod to the agencies that do the work, supports their efforts, but it doesn't seek to usurp or augment their work. It doesn't seek to create new local layers of policy that other communities don't have when we're out there competing with other communities for commerce and growth. And, you know, it does conclude in the last whereas clause by saying, "The city of Wausau is committed to the well-being of its citizens with regard to economic opportunity, safe and decent housing, safe neighborhoods, affordable, reliable, secure, clean energy, and the well-being and safety of citizens and community in the present day and for the benefit of future generations." From that, I think that we, as a group, can come up with a reasonable be-it-resolved clause that sets us forward towards that mission. And the be-it-resolved was left off purposely, because the be-it-resolved part of a resolution really is kind of where the political path forward takes place, and we really should be the authors of that, and that's why it was left out. This morning, well, Friday morning, I received version three from the mayor, and the only thing that I would say concerns me with option three is the be-it-resolved clause at the very end that says, "Be it further resolved, the city will use an environmental justice lens when discussing how to use federal infrastructure funds should Congress approve the trillion-dollar federal infrastructure bill." That really is earmarking funds that we don't have yet, that we don't know if we're ever getting, but I remind my peers that the city is sitting on a backlog of street projects and unfixed infrastructure in our city worth $96 million. So we cannot afford to not invest in shovel-ready infrastructure projects that directly impact our citizens and our constituents. And so, you know, if employing the environmental justice lens means that we want to take infrastructure funds and invest them into cleanup of public or private property solely, or by and large, I think we need to reevaluate then our priorities, and I think if we want to adopt option three, that that statement should be stricken. That money doesn't exist yet, it's hamstrung in Congress. So, I, I'm here to advocate for option two. I think it gets us where we need to go, but I think it also minimizes negative impact to our commerce sectors. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll first start off, I think, by addressing some comments that were sent my way earlier for whatever reason, and I'll just say, which is within my right to address those, that, from the organization earlier, that I know what I wrote for the main reason, because I wrote it, and I stand behind those words, I'm very proud of them, and I will stand behind the citizens and constituents I represent. And one reason we have this before us is because of the people that I represent, and they have asked me in various ways over the years, even prior to my taking office, that, that I pursue actions such as these before us this evening. So, I will do that, and I will do that based on fact and documentation rather than fiction and insults, as we heard earlier. So, I, I'd like to start off by discussing the resolution one, that draft, and we know we've had that before us to review, and I, I think there was some confusion and some disinformation about that, and I'd like to inject some objectivity and, and fact into commentary about it. So, there was some concerns that it was from Evanston, Illinois, and I know we heard that some felt that was a communist plot or some pursuit of a fictitious lawsuit, and surely it was none of those. I'd like to talk about why that was used as, to inspire Wausau's initial environmental justice resolution. So, Evanston was the first municipality in the Midwest, to my knowledge, to, to pursue something like this, and it was a matter of leadership, not doing things that others didn't want to do, as we had heard at one point. But I think what really hits home, the validity of that resolution, and, and kind of helps us dismiss some of those falsehoods, is that we hear that this will intervene or undermine, you know, relationships with the EPA or the DNR. will intervene or undermine, you know, relationships with the EPA or the DNR and our regulators. But it's very important to know that I have communicated on multiple occasions with Region Five EPA in Chicago the last several weeks and discussions about environmental justice. And I think it's edifying to know that it was EPA Region Five who had interfaced with Evanston on that resolution and the EJ mapping. So my understanding is Evanston had sought out their guidance on certain aspects of that resolution. And it's, it's not my role or ability to characterize the EPA's position on those things. But I was able to acquire some records from EPA Region Five on the communications between some in Evanston and the EPA there. And I'd like to read one sentence from December 15th, 2020, at 10:10 a.m., sent to three members of the EPA Region Five from someone in Evanston. And it said, "Thank you so much for our conversation this morning. It was so nice to see all of you. I was encouraged by your enthusiasm and thoughtfulness in support of what we are doing here in Evanston. We now have a lot more information and sources to look into." So I think when evaluating the concepts and language in draft one, we must realize that it was very solid that the EPA had interfaced with Evanston on that. And we can put aside some of the fictions that we have heard about that. And as we heard from several citizens this evening in, in public comment, you know, equity is, not as a matter of opinion, but as a matter of fact, equity is inherent in environmental justice. I mean, by definition and application. When you look at the EPA's primer on environmental justice, what you'll see is a half to three-fourths of a page about equity and its role in environmental justice. So also, with public engagement, I saw in the packet that one advocate of, of draft two had stated, "We need to separate public engagement because it wasn't clear whether or not we were talking about environmental justice or public engagement at times." Well, that too is one of the really two critical requisite components of environmental justice per the EPA. So if we were to remove these two elements, it would be like trying to bake a real chocolate cake without any chocolate. That simply is not possible. And so there is no legitimate EJ approach or resolution that does not involve equity and public engagement. And I thought draft three by the mayor really captured and encapsulated a lot of the, the positives and concepts in draft one, but it simply, I, I think, had the, the benefit of brevity, perhaps. And so, well, I do think that draft one, done, you know, inspired by Evanston, as they had interfaced with the EPA there, that is probably the, the more robust, comprehensive resolution when it comes to environmental justice. I think the mayor's draft is, is a, is a positive potential alternative. And there were two things in draft three that I think if these were added, they'd really address any apprehensions I had about that draft and maybe just clarify or strengthen a couple small things. There was a portion in draft three that states, "Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Wausau, Marathon County, Wisconsin, that the City of Wausau will use environmental justice principles during policymaking by developing a plan with clear goals for meaningful public engagement." I feel it would be a little more comprehensive if that were to be changed to, "The City of Wausau will use environmental justice principles during policymaking and develop a plan with clear goals for meaningful public engagement." Because then it doesn't, in a way, oversilo that to simply public engagement. And by changing that one word into two and develop, that, that would really address my apprehension about that statement. And then lastly, where it says, "The principles of environmental justice," this is draft three, "can help build policy based on respect and equality for all people," my suggestion there would be to use respect and equity instead of just equality in that statement. So really, I think the, the mayor has captured the requisite components of environmental justice based on the agencies that use it and support it. And those changes could, could address my concerns. And I wanted to, lastly, just end with, I think, some positives for this body and, and what we're doing here and some of these terms and frameworks we're looking at. So with equity and environmental justice, it's not just valued by our regulators and state and federal government. It has become one of the four guiding principles in state agency coalitions that are now addressing contamination. And for example, the PFAS Action Plan, which can be found on the DNR's site, which is by WISPAK, and that, that includes other state agencies. I'd just like to end by listing the four guiding principles of their action plan in this document on the DNR site. The four guiding principles stated are, number one, environmental justice; number two, health equity; number three, innovation; number four, pollution prevention. So I, I hope some of these comments provided some fact and background on why I, I feel some of these items are important. And, and I would agree with, with the public on, on the equity matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've studied all three of these, these resolutions in, in front of us. And, and in fact, you know, I, this started out as Alder Killian's baby, you know, because of the environmental injustices that have not only taken place in his district, but in mine as well. And I sit on this council today largely because of the environmental injustices that have been taken place in my district and have affected my family. I fully support the first, the first one. I think it's, I think it's fair. I think it's equitable. I think it's whole. And as far as the second one goes, I have a couple of questions. And if I could ask, in, in the, in the email on page 22, it says, "This draft is also focused on environmental justice," in the second paragraph. What does that mean? Does it mean it's focused on something else that includes environmental justice? I mean, we are, we are here talking about environmental justice and environmental justice only. So that is my first question. And my second question, it would be addressed to Attorney Jacobson. And if this is not appropriate, Madam Chair, just by all means, say so. Is, Ms. Jacobson, is it, these first two, I want to say, item one and, and Resolution Three were, were brought to bed by staff, Alder Killian, Mayor, Mayor Rosenberg. My question to you is, is it, is it common practice for us as alderpeople who are, are policymakers to come to your staff and the engineering department's staff for policy decisions?
You'd answer that, Madam Chair?
One, I don't know what you mean by pattern and practice or typical practice.
Yes.
And, and two, you said for policy decisions. I'm not sure the staff was asked to make any policy decisions.
Well, I guess, let me clarify. Let me clarify. What I'm saying is, is Mayor Rosenberg drafted number three. Alder Killian drafted number one. Number two, a policymaker came to you. Is, is it, is it common practice for an alderperson to, to use, to use city time and stuff to develop her own policy, her own resolution?
I wasn't involved in the initial ask that was made of our Assistant City Attorney, so I can't really address that or speak to exactly what was requested. Typically, our office acts at the direction of a committee or a council direction to, you know, if something's tabled or referred back or something as a, as a group, because you're the body that represents the city. And the city is really the client. So I think it would depend on the situation. But it was my understanding, as I explained to you in the email that I sent, that as the Chair of Public Health and Safety, and she can correct me if I'm incorrect, had requested the Assistant City Attorney to draft something, as she explained in her first comment. I, I don't know if that's common. I, I don't know that it happens all the time. I, I don't know how else to answer that.
Thank you. And can somebody please ask me about this, answer me about, "This draft is also focused on environmental justice." What else is it focused on? If it, because this, this draft, the word also is very disturbing.
Where are you referencing?
I'm referencing the email from Alder Rasmussen on page 22 in the second paragraph. I don't know if you could answer that question, Attorney Jacobson?
I can't speak for another writer of an email, but I'll defer to the chair. See if through the chair she wishes to pose that question to Alder Rasmussen.
I can respond to that. I wrote it, so.
Go ahead.
Okay. So my email indicates that the, the version two was also, in, in the context of the email, was focused exclusively on environmental justice and was not intermingling the concept of environmental justice and a separate policy on public engagement. My thought in that realm is that public engagement matters beyond the scope of environmental justice. We want public engagement with everything we do, not just environmental justice. So if public engagement is as important to us as we say it is, and we want an effective policy on public engagement, it should happen separately and be a separate plan. And so narrowing the focus of version two to only environmental justice helps keep that resolution on target. Now, I will say, in more, and, and I'll address the issue of seeking the research from the staff. The resolution that we have that's known as version one left our committee on a tie vote, which was essentially a fail. We had a two-hour debate about it in the council chamber where we were at an impasse. Knowing that, as a committee chair, I went back to our staff, who are subject matter experts on the things in question, and asked them to do some research on the concept of EJ. And if we needed a, a resolution to that effect, what would an effective environmental justice resolution say? Now that said, weeks prior to that draft coming out and entering the meeting packet, the legal office made the mayor aware of that. She was aware that her staff was doing that work for me. I know for a fact that she was told that that draft was happening. Historically, I can't remember the last time that a mayor wrote a resolution on their own, other than Mayor Rosenberg, because she has that skill set.
Pardon me, ma'am. Do I still have the floor? I don't believe you, Alder.
I'm answering your question.
Yeah, Alder Rasmussen has the floor, yes.
So Mayor Rosenberg has the capability to write a resolution on her own. Historically, the last three did not. So almost every resolution or ordinance that came before us was either drafted by staff or drafted by attorneys. And so when we, in common practice, need those documents written, we get them written from the professional staff. They do some research on a concept that we're interested in. They bring us some options, sometimes even a recommendation, and then we take action. None of us are experts on most things. We're not engineers. We're not environmental experts. We're not attorneys. We depend on people who are. And so when we need answers, that's where we go. And so if, you know, anyone feels that it's inappropriate for me to ask the professional staff to do professional work, good luck with that.
Thank you. I will not be supporting item two because I, I just don't think it's a good fit for Wausau. There's, and, and it's just as plain and simple as that. I, I could support document three if the word equity was included. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on the resolution as I presented it. I did base it off of the conversation that I heard happening here at council. I based it off of Alder Killian's draft. And for the record, equity being in there or not being in there, that is just oversight, you know, slicing and dicing as you're writing. So if you want to add that, I mean, obviously, you own all of this as a policy body. You get to decide what's in there. You can amend the heck out of it. So please do. And then I guess one last bit about the be it resolved, you know, I wanted to give a little bit of thought to what I thought we were kind of, what I was coming to as the culminating principles here. And the reason that I did include the, that federal infrastructure portion of it is because it's been high, it's been reported that this federal framework for this, for the infrastructure will be, will include those racial equity guidelines and implementation through that. So that's why I included it. That, those are quotes from the EP Administrator, Michael Reagan. So that's, that's why it's there. But again, you own this. You get to decide how we want to implement this. We can be aggressive. We don't have to be. We can do what you all want. So I'm going to just leave us with, generally, when council would like staff to work on things, there's, there's a request in a committee or things like that. So I think it's prob, we probably left it a little unclear at the council meeting. And we can probably all benefit from being a little bit more clear there. So anyway, I'm here. If you have any questions, otherwise, I'm more, I'm taking notes. So if there's any way I can help, please let me know.
Thank you, Alder Watson.
So in reading all three, I guess I didn't see us, the city, in version two that much. And I know that we, we still, if we would like that version, we would have the hand at creating the be it resolved. But it, it seemed very, you know, federal and state-focused, which, I mean, they do, they do have a big hand in all of their, you know, a lot of the environmental cleanup and that kind of thing. So I get why they're mentioned. But I, I sort of think a resolution about the City of Wausau should have a lot of us in there, right? I mean, we're the people. So I really liked the version three. But I do have to agree that it may be a little premature putting in information about the infrastructure plan. Because I think using that idea about, like, we will have an environmental justice lens, we'll look at it through that lens, like, I think any policy that would come up, we would still look at it through that lens without naming the policy, like, naming the infrastructure plan. So I guess I would, I would love this third resolution, you know, adding the word equity in the fourth whereas instead of equality, right? Taking out the eighth whereas, which includes the environmental, or the infrastructure framework, removing the final resolved, and maybe putting that environmental justice lens somewhere else in the be it further resolved, and switching up those be it further resolved. So we have the, the inventory first, and then go into how we're going to use this lens as a policymaking tool. And then I also had a question. I thought when we had this discussion about this EPA EJ screen, that one of the things that Mr. Lindman mentioned is that the staff isn't very comfortable with that software or that, that thing. And so he mentioned something about, like, the city LMI. Is that something that can be subbed in instead? Because that's, that's what I wrote in my notes, the city. Is that what it's called? The city LMI thing? Because I thought you brought up images of where preferences is, like demographics and stuff.
We did. In our GIS system, we have the capability of including that census data. I had talked with Tom as well on some other things, on trying to figure out if that information from the EJ screen website, if we could download that data and just incorporate it. And our GIS people are working on that. But ideally, we'd like it, if that's something that the body wants, we would like it in our system. our system, rather than having two different data systems, so yes.
May I, just if it pleases the Chair and my colleagues, just touch on the data question and what Mr. Lindman said? I'll keep it exceedingly brief if.
Is that okay with you, Alder Watson?
Sure, I'm pretty much.
Otherwise, we will come back to you to finish.
Okay.
Yes, we can do that.
Go ahead, Tom, and then we'll go back to you.
My apologies, Alder Watson. I just, I had forgotten to mention in my earlier comments that you're correct absolutely about the data component. And fortunately, a director at EPA Region Five put me in touch with their technical team, and they sent me three methods, which look relatively simple, that we can now use to import the EJ screen data into our local mapping system. I apologize for not mentioning that, and I'll forward this to you, Mr. Lindman.
Great.
Okay, Alder.
So then, I guess it would still using the data from that in our own mapping tool instead in that last resolve. And then one part I did like from the version two is that it does give a bit more of a shout-out to the EPA and the Wisconsin DNR for what they do. So I don't know if there is a component that we can bring from that version two to say, like, the city of Wausau obviously works in, you know, concert with these other federal and state regulatory, you know, entities with their work in environmental justice. So I guess that's, those are my comments. I would steer more towards the version two and just a few modifications.
Version two?
Oh.
Version three, sorry, version three with those modifications.
Thank you. Certainly. Alder Neal?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was all ready to say, you know, that was so much in accord with Alder Watson's point until she said version two. Wait a minute. So glad we ironed that one out. Yes, first of all, I do agree with the various comments just made by Alder Watson with regards to her preference for three and suggestions to alter it somewhat. You know, going back to the first one, and I was, I mentioned this in our, in our meeting discussion, that I just, I felt it was, it was very ponderous, needlessly redundant, and it just said some things I thought shouldn't even be in there because they were not really germane, at least to the point where they were repeated and repeated. So I really wanted something that was a bit more to the point and had an element of, you know, our city's statements, you know, in it, our identity, our aspirations and whatnot. Version two, I find to be a very informative document, but I don't find it to be a statement really so much of philosophy, if you will. I will add to Alder Watson's suggestions, my own, that, you know, why not look at version two and find, you know, some particular content there that can add a little bit of meat or information to version three that talks about, you know, tools that are available and processes and programs that are in place that we are committed to following? And then, yes, go more so with version three as our, our city statement, you know, where we stand. I think that's important, so if that makes sense while you're taking notes, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay. Alder Peckham?
Thank you. This has been most elucidating. I read the packet, and it struck me as kind of a giant word salad with a bonus at the end that I didn't see coming. It would have been nice if there had been a table of contents saying, you are going to see in this packet, the old stuff, and then, without any introduction or whatever, you're going to see a brand-new one that's brought to us by Alder Rasmussen. And then scroll to the end, and the mayor is going to have something for you there too. Anyway, so finally, I kind of figured it out coming in, but now it's been explained. Anyway, I came here willing to support version one, hearing Alder Killian make his statement. I would, I guess, I don't know if it's appropriate, but I would ask him if he would be interested in perhaps making a motion to adopt version three. And I think he would have at least one amendment to it, and I have an amendment to it that I think would perhaps be well-received, and I think Alder Watson would have some amendment to it. So I would invite him to do the honors, and if he would like to do that, I would second it. I would invite a motion from my colleague from District Three, if he would like to be the one to do that.
No, it isn't.
Is that possible? I could just toss it to him, or we have to wait in line?
Point of order. I mean, is that taking action? It's not.
Parliamentarians said it's a comment, so I'm going with that. Right. I don't know who had their light on next. I'm sorry. I think it was.
I have it after.
Mr. Killian, Alder Killian, you're next, and then Alder Herbst.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And for the benefit of my colleague who has comments, and I was going to make a motion as Alder Peckham suggested, but certainly, if that would, would that cause a problem with ending discussion, or my colleagues still have the ability to give their comments?
No, yeah, we would ask for a second, but then we would still discuss the.
Just want to make sure they had a chance to chime in. Then I would make the motion for draft three, version three, with the suggested edits that have been made in the discussion. Do we, shall I itemize those now? Yes. Okay. Give it a go here. So in the portion where it says, "Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Wausau, Marathon County, Wisconsin, that the city of Wausau will use environmental justice principles during policymaking by developing a plan," just to amend that to say, "environmental justice principles during policymaking and develop a plan." And then the other, the other amendment on the language was, "Whereas the principles of environmental justice can help build public policy based on respect and equity instead of equality." That was the second language edit there. And I believe Alder Watson had wanted to pull in a portion of some of the historical information from two, but I'm not quite certain which item is most desired.
Okay.
And let's see, have I missed any of the, oh, and the, also the, to include the amendment from Alder Watson's desire about removing the last section about the federal funding. And whereas number eight, please.
Okay, we have that motion. Do we have a second on that? Oh, Peckham is our second. Thank you. We have our second, so we will further discuss this. Alder Herbst?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Some of these things are going to be my words, and others are going to be from my constituents. And I'm going to start out, first of all, and I'm going to read my notes because they're kind of a mess. This proposal resolution will assist, benefit, or help the groups ID'd in the resolution. How will this assist or benefit groups not ID'd in this resolution? That is a question that I have. Then I'm going to refer to Environmental Justice Proposed Resolution, June 29, 2021. When Ken Fabel, the environmental engineer, and I will quote his words, "I, as environmental engineer for the city of Wausau for the past eight-plus years, am aware of zero instances during that time or any time previous where minority groups or low-income areas have shouldered any additional burden or have been disappropriately affected by environmental consequences as a result of any environmental violations in any of the issues or areas I have been involved with. In other words, I am aware of no environmental injustice which would require a new environmental justice policy to correct, repair, or make good on in the city of Wausau," unquote. Then I'm going to ask, when the chamber, well, my comment is, when the chamber opposes this resolution, believe me, that should tell the committee of the whole something. Then my other question is, what is the legal impact for the city of Wausau if this is passed? And then my last comment is, you know, we have minutes, packets of minutes and discussion, and oftentimes offer community input. To me, all of this resolution, one, two, three, is nothing other than fluff. Thank you.
Thanks. Alder Ryan?
Thank you, Becky. I guess I want to start off that I got my packet, asked for it to be printed. I picked it up on Tuesday. And so I'm kind of in the dark here. I have only one stapled area. It doesn't say what it is. Doesn't say it's version one, two, or three. I have like 50 one-page or two-sided sheets. I don't know what the other versions are. And so I can't vote on anything today because until I look at the video and get the packet of information to know, I can't make an informed decision. I guess I would like to bring up as other issues regarding environmental justice, and maybe it's in here somewhere that I just, I'm not aware of. But we're on the Wisconsin River. We have pollution that's coming downstream to us. And previous discussions that Eric Lindman has mentioned is that some of it is coming from farmland that is actually coming into our river. So with our section of Wausau, are we responsible for what's being done upriver? Is that something that is going to be our obligation? Or how is that going to be handled? I mean, I understand with other properties, you may be able to tell where it's coming from, but I also live halfway up a hill. So if some other pollution is coming from up the hill, how do, how do we determine it and whose responsibility it is? Over the years, I have been following the Fox River, and that they have spent at the Fox River Valley $1 billion in cleaning up the rivers. That is not something we can do, and I don't know how they did it. But from my understanding, I'm not, I'm not fishing. You should not be fishing in Wisconsin River. You should not be swimming in it because of mercury and other contaminants in our area. And that's why we do have our public pools, and there's other private pools. We're also, the main issue I feel that is priority number one, in my opinion, is the lead laterals and the lead pipes within the city. That is something there's been talked about for over a decade regarding Flint, Michigan. It's something we can focus on and hopefully get going, but it's 92, estimated, 9,200 estimated lead laterals within the city of Wausau of 37,000. But when you look at every school, business, childcare, or home, one way or the other, you're not always drinking water from where you live. And some of these other businesses may have issues and have a lot, a lot larger lead pipes and plumbing needs. And as part of it, also, my concern is for all the rental homes that low-income people may be living in. And then, how are we, as a community, going to use our resources from the Biden funding so that if there are landlords or smaller landlords or larger ones, if they need to go ahead and improve their properties and they can't afford it, what are we, as a community, going to do? Are we going to look at getting some type of funding because that a number of low-income or people of color may be living in these? And that is, is it going to be a war between the city pushing versus these owners that can't afford to do it? So at a certain point, I see the lead, lead pipes within the city streets, as well as the lead laterals affecting about 9,200 when we have, you know, 37,000 residents. So we're, we're having to look at issues in regard to not all the population, but when you look at water usage with all these other businesses, or where you play, or your school, it is probably going to impact 90, maybe to 100% of your community. And then how are you going to handle it? Who is responsible? Is it something that we have to determine? But if there's going to be any motions or suggestions at this point, I feel like I got a packet from Mars because I don't have what everyone else has. So I can't make any vote. Thank you.
Thank you. We have next Alder Peckham. Alder Larson. I'm sorry, I missed it. You're next, Alder Peckham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to just go back to some of the comments that were discussed in the, in the public, and that is, I see, you know, where they says it's going to affect factories and businesses. I don't know that it's going to affect them more than it is to make them accountable, you know, and that's, that's what I think environmental justice is about, you know? We welcome businesses here, but be accountable to, to keeping our environments, our environment clean. And I welcome the, at first, when I saw these three resolutions, I thought, what a big distraction, you know, from what we originally came here for, you know? But I'm glad, in a sense, we got some different ideas, and I'm willing to back the, what we had just, the, the, the motion that was just, was given. And going back to, when I, when I saw this in the packet about what Ken Fabel's statement that Alder Herbst touched on, you know, the first things that came to my mind were the environmental injustices that were done in my district, where, where people on Thomas Street were left in limbo for a decade or more because they didn't know if their house was going to be tore down or not because of the street, you know? It went on for so long. I think of the environmental injustice that, that went on in District Three when, when Thomas Street was, this Phase Two was tore up, well, fully knowing that the sewers and the pipes and everything was all contaminated around the corridor they were going to dig up, but the corridor itself was not, was not dug up. You know, it was not, I mean, it was not tested. It was dug up, putting many families along that line in danger, in dangers we probably won't know for 20 years. We don't know what's in the dust that was circulating. We don't, oh, we just told, well, we'll just throw some water on it. We were told that when, when they were digging it up, you know? We'll just throw some water on it so it don't fly. Well, guess what? It still flew, you know? I know I had family there. So, so I can't stand by Ken Fabel's statements there because, because of the environmental injustices I just said. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Peckham?
Thank you. I think we're steaming along rather nicely here. I would just have a comment to start with. I was pleased that it. I was pleased that in the third resolution, the one that we're discussing, there is the phrase that we, "City of Wausau will use environmental justice principles during policymaking by developing a plan with clear goals for meaningful public engagement." And I would just go back to, I was pleased that Director of Public Works Lindman had an idea on that and how we should proceed. I want to make sure that part gets done and is not just left to rot in this resolution. But Mr. Lindman suggested that he and perhaps others in the city who are involved in plans for public works and affect the broad spectrum of the public, put together kind of a compendium of what they do presently to inform the public of a rezoning or a construction project or whatever, and say, okay, here's what we're doing now, and here's this for you to examine. What would you like us to change, improve, expand, or whatever? So, I think that is kind of ready to happen. I just want to make sure it does happen. And I would ask a little bit of patience here as I propose my amendment. The amendment would add some words to the last, "Be it further resolved," and it would be at the, after the first sentence where it says that the city will develop and maintain an active GIS-based inventory of environmental justice areas. I would ask that we hold that spot. And I go to, and de notation. Add the words, "The inventory will be updated every two years and will be provided to each city alder at the beginning of their terms, as well as city staff as appropriate." Anyway, I think that should be part of the resolution to make it specific and make that happen. And I think it would add emphasis to kind of the thinking behind this resolution if that was part of what you got when you started your term on the City Council. Here's a map of environmental justice areas. Here you go. Have a good two years.
Can you just repeat the thing that you said about, and city staff should? It was after. You said it will be distributed to city alders at the beginning of their terms and city staff will?
The full thing, I can just cover the whole deal.
I'm just trying to type it out.
Very good. I talk so fast, you know? "The inventory will be updated every two years and will be provided to each city alder at the beginning of their terms, as well as city staff as appropriate." I suppose you could say a minimum of every two years, but... Anyway, looking for a second on that one.
Alder Killian. Yeah. Okay. Okay. We are going to vote on the first amendment. Then we will vote on the second, but discussion will continue. So, we can keep adding amendments, but we're getting behind up here with all our little scratchy notes. So, the first amendment is the one that changes, what I have is, from equality to equity, removing Section Eight, is that correct? And then, the last statement.
The last, "Be it resolved."
The last, "Be it resolved."
Removing that, yes. And then, changing the first, "Now therefore be it resolved" paragraph to say, "And develop a plan."
Oh, policymaking and develop, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Is that, okay. Does that clears mud?
I think that covers it. Does it not, Alder Killian?
Yes, Ms. Jacobson, it does. And in the last one, you mentioned it included the removal of "by" and then the addition of those.
Correct.
Yes, that's correct.
And the removal of the last, "Be it resolved" paragraph.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Could I just toss, I didn't, maybe it was said and I didn't quite hear it, but it was also the removal of whereas number eight.
Right, that was in there, yep.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, so, we will be voting on that first amendment now. And I guess we do roll call. Okay, let's start with Rasmussen.
No.
Watson.
Yep.
Herbst.
No.
Larson.
Yes.
Ryan.
No.
Peckham. Martins. Killian.
Yes.
Neal.
Wadenski.
Aye.
And McElhaney, aye. No. Okay, that passes nine to three. We'll do the number, the second amendment.
It'd be eight to three.
Nine to three?
It would be eight to three.
Eight to three. Eight to three, okay. Okay, so, the second amendment, yeah, yeah, by Peckham and second by Killian, is, I don't know how you put in that, that the active GIS system would, or whatever system would be actually implemented, was one of his suggestions. I don't know how we...
That was in the wording already. I just read from the mo, from the base motion.
And then, that the inventory will be updated at the minimum of every two years and provided to alders upon the start of their terms and city staff as needed, correct? As appropriate?
As appropriate, yeah.
As appropriate. Okay, is that correct? Okay, just want to make sure. All right, Rasmussen.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Herbst.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Ryan.
No.
Peckham. Martins.
Aye.
Killian.
Aye.
Neal.
Aye.
Wadenski.
Aye.
And McElhaney is aye as well. Ten to, ten to one, no, there's more than one. Was it, was it Ryan? Ten to one. Ten to one. So, now we will continue. Alder Watson.
So, I had mentioned, and Alder, Neal, and Killian had mentioned this too, was pulling a few of the, I guess, background data pieces about the DNR and the EPA into that third resolution. And so, I don't know if you all can follow me to page twenty-five, which is part of the version two. I guess I was looking at the eleventh and twelfth whereas, which are the top two. I don't know if we need both of them, you know, to sort of pull into our new resolution, but I thought those really do tell, you know, what the DNR and EPA in Region Five do. And then, the second whereas really has all the tools that they use to mitigate some of the issues. So, I don't know, I'm torn which one of those, because I think pulling both, it might be a little long, but one of them could demonstrate really our federal and state allies. So, that was sort of my comment. I don't want to make a motion because I'm not really sure, I'm on the fence about it, but...
Okay, Alder Neal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, you know, even though, you know, we're in effect voting tonight, we're not actually instituting this, what we're doing is amending it, basically giving commentary about how we'd like it to change. So, I would only make a motion that the version three take into consideration elements of version two in the draft that will come to council. I don't know if it's going to go to committee first, but when it comes along for voting, then, you know, I think that the mayor and staff can kind of look at this and say, you know, this whereas and that whereas are really great additions from version two, and let's shoehorn them into version three. Because I think that little bit of, as I mentioned earlier, that little bit of information about tools, programs, et cetera, agencies, it's informative, you know, for a document of this sort, you know, for the public to read, kind of shows that, you know, we do have a toolbox as well as, you know, a philosophy. So, I don't think we need to maybe pull out specifics tonight. I think that, you know, the idea is to pull out some specifics and have that worked in and brought before us for voting.
I don't know if it's a motion. Okay, I have a motion that we will ask staff to pull out. I'm, okay, I have a second by Watson. Is there any further discussion on that motion, or that amendment, excuse me?
Over here.
Okay, I will go with Alder Peckham and then Alder Rasmussen, thanks.
Thank you. I think it would be cleaner procedurally if we voted as a committee on the basic wording and then add that, that's what we would send to the council, but we would add a request per Alder Neal that the authors and anybody else they want to involve also examine version two and bring to us some possible amendments that we could consider when the full council gets it. So, send the thing intact, but then have some possible amendments that we could choose from. That's the way I would do it.
See? Okay.
Thank you. I think that the mayor possesses the skill set to make the appropriate modifications, and I think it would be appropriate for us to trust her to take the informative segments from option two and incorporate them into option three and then bring us that draft at the council meeting. I don't know that we need to, you know, necessarily cherry pick it. The facts are there. And this is the work of the professional staff, so she could certainly network with them. But I think we could trust that she will pick the appropriate educational and program-specific statements and insert them into number three. I don't know that that has to be part of the motion. We could direct her to do that, but you wouldn't have to vote on that part.
Okay, Alder Neal.
Thank you. As described by Alder Rasmussen, pretty much that was my motion, to have discretionary authoring address, you know, the general request to pull from version two items deemed helpful in the draft that will come before us for voting.
Mayor?
Okay, so, I'm going to draft some Mad Libs-style amendments for you to, or just put it in there and you can decide what you want. Perfect.
Well, we're going to vote on that first. So, understand the amendment that Alder Neal began is with, that we are going to vote on now?
So, the amendment is that we would direct the mayor to
Back to...
Copy-paste basically the provisions of number two into number three that bring the fact-based research in to the version she wrote.
Correct. Is that it? Okay. Yes. Does that make sense? Makes, okay, great. Rasmussen.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Herbst. Larson.
No.
Ryan.
No.
Peckham. Martins.
Aye.
Killian.
Aye.
Neal.
Aye.
Wadenski.
Aye.
And McElhaney is aye as well. That passes nine to two. Well, I have a question. Do we need, I mean, we kind of went through it. Is there any more discussion on this? Go ahead.
Thank you. I think that the type of discussion we had here tonight is exactly what we needed to do, to get where we're trying to go. I will say that, given a critical reading of option three on Monday, or Tuesday, rather, this does, in many ways, mitigate the harm that I was concerned about to the commerce sectors that I was seeing in version number one. And so, I think if we incorporate, given the things that we struck from it, referencing the federal bills that have not gone anywhere, and given the fact that we are able to incorporate the data elements of option two, I believe we're heading in the right direction. And I think as long as we can minimize harm to commerce and industry and still make a positive statement, that is, that's a winning outcome.
Thank you. Any other further? They did ask for three, though. That wasn't... Yeah. Okay, we need one more vote. We're going to vote basically on everything we voted on that we are moving in version three with all the amendments that have been voted on previously, to go, you know, to the council for more discussion and a final vote. Right, so, I need a motion for that. Wadenski, second Larson, and here we go. Rasmussen.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Herbst.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Ryan.
No.
Peckham.
Aye.
Martins.
Aye.
Killian.
Aye.
Neal.
Aye.
Wadenski.
Aye.
And McElhaney is aye. That passes ten to one. So, thank you, everyone. I think we're done. Any further discussion? Otherwise, we've had a, we have a motion, I could move to adjourn. Yeah, there we go. Anybody else? I got a second. We're adjourned, thank you.